Republican Commend. First item of business today, we have Mr. Bill Webb, a health officer here in Kent County, and Darryl, the director of emergency services, Agent Greg, the emergency planner, here to give us an update on the COVID-19. Bill?
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to address the commissioners and the community as a whole. Today, I do not have a written narrative, thanks to being a little busy, and I'm going to address this slide one at a time. I will try to be concise and cognizant of the time it's being used. So, to start off, on the first slide, the COVID-19 surge has hit Kent County. It has hit the state of Maryland and the United States as a whole. On the first slide, the red line that is identified shows the spike in cases that have occurred in the state of Maryland since we last met on the 17th. It is a very substantial rise. As you can see, it is the steepest slope on the curve. The surge is here, and it is moving rapidly in Kent County. On the second slide, I have taken the state's hospital bed utilization. The most important thing to note about hospital bed utilization is this seems to be the metric that is driving the governor's decisions about restrictions and further executive orders. As you can see, the spike that we have had since October 4th, it has gone up significantly. We are almost at the point today where we were back in March with hospitalizations. At this point, the restrictions that are in place are a lot less stringent than it was in April and May, so that may go up. As far as hospital utilization here locally, it's important to note that the University of Maryland Shore Regional Health has had vacancies available from the reports I have seen. In Chestertown, last week, we had two days where there were no vacancies in the acute care beds. And those particular days, it was not necessarily attributable to COVID. What they were being used for was not identified, but the number of COVID cases were minimal locally at the hospital. The next slide is much more local to Kent County. Kent County has seen a very significant increase in cases in the last two weeks. Since I last addressed you and the community, we have seen in total 134 cases. I know the slide says 131. The slide does not take into account the cases that came through yesterday. We had three additional cases. As you can see, if you look at the tail on the right side of the graph, you will see the spike that has happened here locally. 131 cases represents about 25% of all cases we have recorded in the county since the start of this particular outbreak. We have cases in facilities, we have cases in businesses, big businesses, small businesses, family units. It really has taken hold in Kent County, and I'm concerned about what has happened. I'm watching the case reports closely. It has pretty much taken over a lot of what the health department is doing on a day-to-day basis. This is, we're at a critical juncture here in Kent County with the COVID-19 crisis. We are monitoring the cases and working with the businesses and the facilities to help minimize the risks to the community. At this point, we have, the vast majority of the cases that we have seen are related to community spread. We have had 113 that are attributable to community spread. And one of the things that has happened as a result of this uptick in cases is our contact tracing team has really gotten overwhelmed with trying to track down where people, where it came from. And one of the side effects of that is that the questionnaire we do at the initial interview has been pared back because we have so many people to get through. And statewide, we have stopped asking about visits to high-risk locations and large group activities. One of the most interesting things that I heard yesterday related to contact tracing, instead of asking about high-risk locations and large group activities, the question has now been framed is, where do you think you were exposed to the virus? And of the people that responded, 42% of the people, this is statewide, 42% of the people did not know where they were exposed to the virus. So, it is very important for everybody to be vigilant with mask-wearing, hand-washing, and social distancing. This particular surge from the models I have seen looks like it will continue into mid-January and possibly February. We are very concerned about the impact on healthcare system, particularly because hospital bed utilization is up, and the influenza spike that we see usually every year has not yet started. So, I take this opportunity to encourage everyone to get a flu shot. The next slide just sort of illustrates the number of new cases in the last 14 days. We've had 101 new cases in the last two weeks. It's eight quarters of all the cases in the county that happened in the last two and a half weeks, which is truly astounding. The next slide illustrates the total cases by zip code. I know that we have many municipal leaders who are interested in tracking that information, and are citizens, so I include that in the presentation. Of course, the highest numbers are related to our population centers in the county. The next slide illustrates our seven-day positivity rate as compared to the state of Maryland. We have historically been below the state average. It's important to note that since I last presented, our positivity rate has more than doubled. Our positivity rate has been above 5% for the last seven days. The good news is, yesterday, our positivity rate dropped to 4.6, which is good news. I will take that, and that is, I'll take any good news we can get. On the next slide illustrates the other key metric, or case rate per 100,000, the seven-day moving average in Kent County versus the state of Maryland. It's important to note that we have significantly, in the last several days, we have significantly exceeded the state average, and that is a artifact of our small population. For every one case that we have, because we have about 20,000 residents in Kent County, every one case we have represents about five when you amp it up to 100,000 per 100,000 population. So, that is certainly higher, and today, or sorry, yesterday, our rate was 50.8, which was even higher than what's recorded on the graph. The next slide just goes to show that, how we're doing in testing, providing testing to the population. We have, we're third highest at this point in the percentage of population tested when you compare us to the state of Maryland. That may sound good, but one of the side effects of having such a significant surge in cases is our testing capacity locally has just gotten overwhelmed. We are using our local testing site here in Chestertown that occurs on Mondays and Thursdays. We are also referring people to Chesapeake College on Mondays and Wednesdays, and we have, we're having difficulty keeping up with demand. We're encouraging people who need a test and can't get in the point of this, testing statewide has become, it's gotten overwhelmed as well. Our testing capacity is saturated. We're interested in potentially, what can we do with that? Many of the labs have self-swap mailing kits that can be used for people who need a test immediately and need rapid turnaround. One of the problems that we have encountered is nationwide, testing has exploded just as the surge is occurring, that our lab turnaround time, for the lab we were using, the turnaround time reached about eight days last week. That is unacceptable. It makes no sense to test somebody who's infectious for 10 days and have to wait eight days to get a result. Consequently, we are switching labs to a different provider that should be happening later this week and be in place next week so that we can get better results to our At this point, in terms of recommendations, we do have the option of implementing further restrictions that are more strict than the state. At this point, I am not advocating for that because typically, our eastern shore and our regional area does this as a group. Further restrictions at this point would be, everybody is, the community is, your COVID fatigue is real, and our population knows what needs to happen in terms of social distancing, staying at home if you're sick. And I think that's why the governor has not been as aggressive with this most recent spike, is that, one, it impacts our economy significantly when those restrictions are in place, and, two, at this point, further restrictions would, the return on those restrictions would be marginal. One of the things I did want to mention, as a result of the surge, I have been in communication with Dr. Couch at the Board of Education. The Kent County Public School System has decided to return to virtual-only instruction as a result of our positivity and case rate numbers. Our plan moving forward is to evaluate the metrics on a weekly basis. I have also been in contact with our non-public schools. They are continuing to operate with in-person educational activities, and that, the decision that we have reached with our non-public schools, at this point, the non-public schools haven't had any cases in their students or their teachers at this point. And forcing them to do a virtual-only educational alternative would not be effective. My opinion is that what they're doing now currently is working. Certainly, if they develop cases in their students or their staff, we start to see outbreaks there, we can take different action on that front. So, on the next slide, I want to spend some time talking about the COVID-19 vaccine. That is the light at the end of the tunnel for this particular pandemic. We are excited that this week, we have two products that are being evaluated by the FDA, one by Pfizer, one by Moderna. MDH has advised the health department that vaccine may be delivered starting the week of December 22nd. And if we get it, the health department is going to be prepared to distribute it. The first, I guess the first thing I want to advise you and the community, that the vaccine deployment is going to occur in several phases. And initially, it is going to be in short supply, and we are going to prioritize certain groups to get the vaccine over other groups according to recommendations from the CDC and the federal government. The first group of folks, Phase 1A, is going to be healthcare workers and residents of nursing homes and congregate care facilities. The next phase is going to be essential infrastructure workers. That's going to be your first responders and public works folks, and those who have been identified in the past as essential infrastructure employees. The third part of Phase 1 is going to be adults with high-risk medical conditions and adults who are over 65. At this point, the federal government is providing the vaccine at no cost to the individual, and the Kent County Health Department will be prepared to dispense. One of the things that I do want to mention when it comes to vaccine deployment, there will be three organizations that receive vaccine initially. One is going to be the Kent County Health Department. The other is going to be Shore Regional Health for immunizing their staff and their patients. And then the third group is going to the CBS Walgreens Pharmaceutical Group that have been contracted by the federal government to immunize those who work and are residents of nursing homes. So, that is, that will be sort of available through three options. Initially, we are going to target the priority groups as they're identified, and to prepare the community that there is going to be an announcement about vaccine availability for the general public. I anticipate vaccine availability sometime in mid to late January, so please be patient with us. It is an enormous task to vaccinate 20,000 people in the county with the resources that we have locally. Okay. Next slide. Initially, we definitely anticipate shortages even for those who are identified in priority groups. We are going to vaccinate as many people as we get vaccinated. We're going to be prepared to deploy it. Let's see here. The hospitals and pharmacies are identified to get the Pfizer vaccine because the Pfizer vaccine has the ultra-cold storage requirements. They're equipped with freezers and the ability to reconstitute the vaccines that our local health departments are not well-practiced in. All likelihood, the health department will receive the Moderna vaccine if it is approved, and we're hopeful that it will be approved and shipped the week of the 22nd of December. At this point, the number of doses and the delivery schedule has not been determined. Okay. The vaccine challenges that we have is that it will require two inoculations separated by at least 21 days. There are very specific temperature and sensitive guidelines, and it has a relatively short shelf length. The federal government is requiring everybody to use PreqMod to register for online appointments. That is going to present a challenge for those in the community that do not have computers or smartphones, or are not computer savvy, so we are working with our emergency operations team to arrange support for those individuals when the need arises. Anticipates of vaccine hesitancy. That essentially means people are going to wait and see how it goes with other folks before they get vaccinated, which is, I want to take the opportunity to stress that the FDA will not approve a vaccine that is not safe and effective. The vaccine that we see and what's in the pipelines has demonstrated that it is effective and that it is safe, and we're going to rely on the expertise of the Food and Drug Administration to make that determination. One thing I do want to mention, that in the studies that I have seen, there are vaccine side effects mimicking illness have been reported by some folks in the study. So, that could be another barrier. If someone gets a vaccine and feels sick as a result of it, that could prevent folks from coming back for the second shot. I want to encourage everybody, if that does occur, that's a normal part of the vaccine's operation, and ramping up your immune system to deal with it. Okay. The health department's, the next slide. The health department's mass vaccination plan, essentially, we're going to turn, we're going to do most of this at the health department on Lynchburg Street. We are going to turn, our entire first floor will be dedicated to providing vaccination activities. We'll have vaccine stations. Vaccinations will occur by appointment only. The appointments will be done through the PreqMod online system. We anticipate having anywhere from two to six teams of vaccinating nurses. Each team is composed of at least two staff members. Those receiving the vaccine will get a vaccine record card and additional information about the side effects and follow-up appointments. At the time of new vaccine, we may have to collect your health insurance information. That is yet to be determined from the Maryland Department of Health. We will follow the requirements if they put in place. Okay. Next slide. I do want to talk about, the CDC and Maryland Department of Health revised quarantine guidelines related to COVID exposure on the 2nd of December to reduce the duration of quarantine for those who have been exposed but are asymptomatic. You are permitted to be released from quarantine. It used to be 14 days if you were exposed to an unpositive, that you would have to go home in quarantine for 14 days. The new recommendation is that if you are exposed and are asymptomatic, you can be released after seven days if you have a negative test. So, also, the quarantine, if you don't get tested and you have no symptoms, you can be released after 10 days. Okay. The final slide that I want to provide is an update on the VA's funding. We have been very successful in getting most of the money spent at this point. One of the things I do want to mention is that all seven fire companies in the county have accepted VA's grant awards, and they're in the process of spending those funds, so I'm grateful that they were able to benefit from this particular funding source. As we move forward, we're looking at potentially two large PPE preparations. If they go through, obviously, that will be successful. If they do not go through, in time, the funds will be reallocated to the ambulance initiative that we had mentioned in a previous health officer meeting. And with this, I do want to close by saying that we're at a critical juncture here. We are in the middle of a surge. We're at an end of funding cycle. We're monitoring the situation closely. I do encourage everyone to continue with wearing your face masks, social distancing, and washing your hands. And if you're in a high-risk, one of the high-risk populations, please be very conservative with your social interactions moving forward. I know that coming up the holiday season is a very popular time to get out and have parties, please. The virus is here in the county. It is here more than it has ever been before in the past, and I'm very interested in making sure that everybody gets to 2021 healthy and safe and in a good state. So, I do want to thank the community for their ongoing support at the health department and of the activities for this very long and ongoing pandemic activity that has exceeded even what I had envisioned in the worst. Thank you for the opportunity to address you and the community. I'll stop there.
Swed, obviously, your report shows a tremendous spike in the disease, and very hard to find any good news in it whatsoever, except one place I see some good news. According to your graph, as of June 14th, we haven't had another death.
Correct. We have not had a death since sometime in October, which is good news. And the other good news that I failed to mention is related to the Maryland COVID Alert telephone cellphone technology. In the state of Maryland, with the governor's urging, the state of Maryland has the highest adoption rate of use of that technology than anywhere else in the country. As of last week, we had about 1.2 million people activate that service on their cellphone, and as far as I'm concerned, I encourage everybody to continue to use that. It's sort of a way that you can have a device that's monitoring this without being aware of it, and it is certainly something that can benefit most of the users. So, encourage everybody to activate Maryland COVID Alert on their phone. It is worthwhile application to have, working for you in the background of your life.
Getting back to the death rate, is that, do you think we contribute that to, because we had a tremendous spike there when we had some real problems at some of our facilities around here, and I'm assuming that's where the majority of that come from. But then it's leveled off, and it seems that we, according to this graph, we haven't had another case. Is that because you think we know more about the disease and we're able to treat it more successfully?
I think our medical professionals have better knowledge of the treatment therapeutics to keep people alive. I also think that the people who are now getting infected are younger and relatively healthier than in the spring. The restrictions that have been put in place for our nursing homes are really, really, they are very strict. And if you have a loved one in a nursing home, it's very difficult to visit them. Their infection control practices have ramped up substantially, and I think that between a lower age of people who are getting infected, better understanding of the treatment, that we are seeing not only fewer people die, we're seeing lower ICU utilization and faster discharge, which is good for the healthcare system.
Well, at a terrible time, at least we can scratch out a little bit of good news out of it, and thank you for that explanation.
Swed, both vaccines require a second shot, is that correct?
Correct. And just so you're aware, if you get a Pfizer, the first Pfizer vaccine, you need to get a second Pfizer vaccine. They're not supposed to enter next month.
How much, are there going to be any, you have the sequence of where it's going to start? Is there going to be requirements that all healthcare workers have to get a vaccine? Or everyone in a nursing home will have to have it? Or is this still, is this going to be a?
My understanding is that the vaccine, if it's issued under an emergency use authorization, which all of the vaccines will, that you cannot mandate legally a vaccine that's authorized under that. It's all voluntary at this point. If you don't want a vaccine, you can choose not to, but if you're in a high-risk setting like a nursing home, or you're a healthcare worker, where you're going to be exposed like a nursing home or you're a healthcare worker, where you're going to be exposed to it, it, it really doesn't make sense to, to get the protection that it offers. But, you know, it is, because it is an EUA-approved vaccine, my understanding is that you can't mandate it.
So, like a nursing home couldn't mandate, could not mandate all their workers receive the vaccine?
Correct. It's, it's going to be strongly encouraged.
Right. I mean, some of the statistics you see, I just looked at a poll this morning, and, I mean, it was over 30% said they're not going to be first, and I, I kind of took that like, we're not opposed to vaccine, but we don't want it being first, and I just wonder how much, you know, impact that will have, particularly when there's limited vaccine. I mean, I don't know, I guess, I mean, won't know until...
Stay tuned when I come back next, you know, for the next installment, I may have more data.
Or figures that, you know.
You have to, you know, they're providing insight.
Okay. Well, you, you good?
Well, I'm, one thing that I'm having personal issues with, and I guess it's the way it is, you know, the new, the new CDC guidelines. So, they recommend you don't take a test until five days after exposure, is that correct?
That is, yes. I mean, it's good to have some lag time after exposure. If you have, you know, a test the, the day following an exposure, the likelihood of getting an accurate result are not, you know, are fairly low.
So, then they said the self-quarantine is now seven, 10 days, but is that if you think you were?
So, if you're, if you're exposed to and had close contact with a known positive, and, you know, the, the current recommendation is to quarantine for 14, the old recommendation was to quarantine for 14 days. What the CDC now says is that you're, you're still past quarantine, but the duration of that quarantine is, you know, it can be as short as seven days if you get a, if you get a test at, you know, at the five-day mark. So, you know, if you're exposed and you're not able to get the test until day five, but if day five, you're exposed and you're asymptomatic and it's negative, then you only have to stay quarantined for another two days.
What'd you say the average result, at the average time for a test result to come back was?
So, for the, the provider that we were currently using last week, the average, the median turnaround time was eight, eight days.
Get it back.
To get it back.
See, I'm having issues with my employees, and I'm sure it's with other employees around the county, is they get a call and they say, I, I was around somebody who tested positive. Well, I do, and I'm like, we'll stay home till you get a test. So, then they're not getting tested for at least, at least three days, it's not five days, and then you got to wait another, at least three days if not get it back. So, every time an employee calls them, says I was around somebody tested positive, I lose an employee for a week and a half, which is a safe thing to do. And I'm sure there's other businesses that are having the same issues throughout the county.
Well, that, that, you know, it is, you know, very difficult for, I, I recognize that, that, that if you run a business, that's a very difficult thing to maintain your operations. We have, you know, we have the same situation in the Health Department. You know, we do not have a lot of, you know, uber-lack of coverage for specific, you know, programs, and if someone is out for 10 days, that is, that is, you know, a substantial difficulty that we have to address. And, you know, the only thing I can say to, you know, in response to that is, you know, this is, you know, the recommendations for, you know, preventing further spread, and I think that if you run a business, you want to stay in operation, and, you know, having somebody who's infectious is, you know, long-term is not good for, for any business.
To me, it's a no-brainer. I mean, I'd rather have one or two people stay home to make sure they're not carrying it, as opposed to them coming to work and losing half my employees and being shut down for a period of time, so it's just, I guess that's just a new normal right now for the next couple of months.
Well, hopefully, you know, as, as the vaccine gets deployed and we get our population immunized, that this will become, you know, you know, a chapter in Kent County history, and, you know, it will be something that we can get beyond.
All right. Wayne, do you have anything she wanted to add?
The only thing, sir, is a positive for us this morning, we were accepted into a program for EMS and 911 dispatch to receive antigen testing that we can do ourselves. It provides 15-minute results for us. Based on results, we didn't have to go get a PCR test, but we'll at least know if somebody's been exposed and within, after the four, five days, if they are positive or not, and what actually will be completed. So, it'll be good for our staff and for, for the volunteering staff.
Ginger, do you have anything?
Well, I would just say that we are working very closely with the Health Department employees to work out all of the logistics for the vaccine, vaccine distribution. There are myriad details to work out, but we're, we're going through it little by little, and we're doing our best to continue to advise the public to use all of the guidelines for social distancing over the holidays to help keep the numbers down here in Kent County.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's going to be an experience, just, I mean, it's a new experience just to have this law work and get people coordinated. It's going to be an learning experience. We certainly appreciate everything that you're doing, all three of you, and all of your staff. I don't know what more we can say.
Stay, stay tuned.
Stay tuned, there'll be more to come.
Unfortunately.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.